I'd like to call to order the December 3, 2013, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, and I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like you to join me in prayer. God, as we enter these holy days, keep us focused on the needs of other people, on ways that we can help people that don't have as much as we do. Give us the opportunity to thank all the blessings of family, friends, and opportunities we all have, and thanks for blessing us with beautiful mountains, rivers, valleys, and people to match our mountains. Remind us of the men and women who are protecting us every day in the armed services, many of them stationed far away from home during this holiday season, and remind us of families who will celebrate holidays without a loved one who's passed on or someone who's very sick. Bless the work of Buncombe County employees. Bless the work of this commission and the excellent people who sit in these seven chairs. Keep your hands and will on our country and other office holders on the local, state, and national levels. Give them wisdom, vision, compassion for people that elected them to be their representatives. Most of all, just give us a chance to pause and thank everybody who means anything to us, and remember that we are here to help other people. Amen. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this commission, it's the duty of every commissioner to avoid both possible and actual conflicts of interest. Does any commissioner know of any known conflict of interest, actual or possible, that with respect to any matter coming before our board this afternoon? If not, we'll proceed to public comment. Any members of the public wish to be heard today? Yes, sir, on the front row and then the gentleman behind there, you'll be number two. And you can just go up here and sit if you'd like. And if you'll give your name and address and where you're from.
Sure. My name's Robert Maluso. I live at 144 Black Oak Drive in Asheville. My wife Bonnie Siobhan is here as well. And as I said, I'm the homeowner at 144 Black Oak Drive here in Asheville. And I'd like to take the opportunity to express some concerns I have with recent work that was commissioned by the county to demolish and stabilize the land at 145 Black Oak. As the commission is aware, back in July, there was a landslide at 145 Black Oak, which ultimately led to the condemnation of the home. It's my understanding, as per the condemnation order, that the county has responsibility to demolish the home and stabilize the slope. The home was demolished, for the most part. My issue is with what was done to stabilize the slope. Since the completion of the work, there has been only one rain event, and I'm already seeing the land beginning to slide back on to Black Oak Drive. As you can see in the pictures... Great, you guys have the pictures?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. As you can see in the pictures taken this past Saturday, the slope has not been stabilized. My concern is that if we see this kind of landslide movement after a single light rain event, what will happen when we receive more rains, even worse if we have a repeat of the record rains that we had this past summer? I understand that no one can guarantee the absolute stability of a slope. But ultimately, who decides if the slope is stable? The problem with 145 Black Oak can be linked directly back to someone with a backhoe and a bulldozer, who thought he was creating a stable slope, but in fact, he wasn't. My suggestion and request of the commission would be to have the Kessel Engineering Firm come out to the site and assess the present slope for its stability and how it relates to its stability. The county used the Kessel Engineering Firm to do the original study of the damage and stability back in July, and Kessel did an extensive study, including core and pit sampling, and has a very good understanding of the issues with 145 Black Oak. I'd be more than happy to supply that report from Kessel Engineering if you'd like to see it. Without a geotechnical engineer approving the finished work, we're all just hoping for the best, which is exactly what the original builder did when he created this problem. And as you can plainly see from the photos in front of you, this is somewhat of a fool's paradise. Our community's welfare depends on the stability of that slope. If the land slides further into Black Oak, it will have a direct effect on the ability for emergency vehicles to reach our homes in the event of a fire. Am I done?
Yeah, you finish up your sentence. Go ahead.
We also have a large sinkhole on the upper slope. Anyway, the bottom line is, we can't move forward even fixing our own road until we have some stability. So I would...
I think there is a meeting with the county manager, and we'll be giving you our position. It is not the duty of the county to stabilize the slope. I'm sorry, it's not.
Okay.
So we won't... You know, we'll be talking to you about that, but I don't want you to get the wrong idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Paul Barrett, and I live at 138 Black Oak Drive, so I'm directly across from the house that started sliding down the hill. And I just wanted to basically reinforce his comments, where the slope now seems a lot less stable than it was before the landslide originally. And even after that one little rain, part of the silt fence has already been overtopped, and some of the dirt along the side of the road from the landslide was never taken off the shoulder of the road. So it just seems like they stopped before they were completely done, and the slope seems in a lot worse shape than it was before the landslide, which only bodes poorly for what's going to happen the next time it gets a significant rain.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am, the front row and then in the back. Raise your... I can't see your face. You can come up and sit up here.
Hi. My name is Mary Pulis, and I own a residence at 136 Black Oak Drive, which is directly below the site of this mudslide. I know you said that the commissioners weren't responsible for stabilization, but when I did some research, and it said that the commissioners enact policies such as an establishment of property taxes, regulation of erosion control, noise and subdivision outside municipal jurisdictions, and adoptions of the annual budget, I think we qualify for an erosion problem here. And I looked up the definition, and I'm sure you all know this, but the erosion is the eating away or wearing away by temperature change, running water, or wind. And we definitely have that problem with running water. And in Webster's Dictionary, they said that, to give an example, trees help prevent the erosion of soil by running water. And unfortunately for us, that didn't work. We had beautiful 100-year-old oak trees uprooted with this mudslide. Our last meeting was 11/19. On 11/25, the tractor left, demolished the home, and evened out a lot of the debris that was left on the site. On 11/26, the very next day after they left, we had 2.27 inches of rain, and the result was a failure. I'm concerned about the road, but I'm also very concerned about my home, and I'm concerned about the welfare for all of us that live down below the site. And we are just one major rainfall away from a catastrophic event, and I cannot stress that enough. We are fearful. And I want to thank you for your time, and just please beware. We would like to be put on the agenda for the next meeting if possible, but we are deeply concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pulis. Yes, ma'am, Christine?
Hi. I know three minutes goes by fast, so I'll try and make it fast. I'm Christina Kelly Merrill. I live in Fairview, 10 Merrill's Road, and I have three quick points that I want to cover. First, I want to acknowledge that some work has been done by some of our commissioners this year to turn the direction we've been on of increasing county spending, increased debt, and higher taxes. But we need to do a reality check on how the citizens of our county are truly doing and how they've been adversely affected in some ways in this last year. First of all, the revenue neutral on property tax or the tax rate increase allows the county to collect the same amount of money it's been collecting for more than six years on the past evaluations of property values. That was never adjusted after the crash of the real estate market, so the county basically has been collecting on inflated values. For maybe half the county property owners, with the new evaluations, they reflected a decrease. However, the higher tax rate put into place this year, they will not see a lower tax bill like they should since their property value decreased. For the other half of property owners, whose property value was increased along with the tax rate increase, they now have to pay the county a substantially larger amount, some doubled and even close to tripled that amount. And that's been really hard on a lot of homeowners and families in the county. So in the last year, on the heels of the recession, we're carrying a huge debt still, and we continue to put the burden on the citizens, and that's concerning. Secondly, actually, I'm going to go to my third point in case I run out of time. You know, I do want to talk about the appointment of Mr. Deutsch as the county attorney. It's not only a huge conflict of interest, but certainly denotes the look of impropriety. Clearly, the county commissioners should not appoint someone to be the county attorney who has been the personal attorney of one of the commissioners in the last election and also help them to retain that seat. This was a huge issue in District 2, and the ethical and professional thing to do is to advocate for fairness and openness in the process of appointing a county attorney, one who is not or has not been the personal attorney of any sitting commissioner or particular political party. So to avoid what appears as impropriety, this appointment needs to be addressed. There are many qualified nonpartisan attorneys in Buncombe County that should be considered for this position. And I can see the yellow lights on, so I'll skip my third point. It was more to do with the budget. And again, I do want to say that there has been some work done in a positive direction, but there's just a lot more to do. And I think we need to remember the people that are trying to pay those tax bills, the people that are bringing us the revenue so that we can have the courthouse and the things that we have, and we have to slow down that train because that debt is being passed on to our children and our grandchildren. So when thinking about the future and spending, I think it's time to relook at how the people are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Any other public comment today? Mr. Rice, anyone else? Mr. Yelton, you can come up and have a seat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you all again. You're looking better. I don't know why it is. Must be my camera. Somewhere in the consent agenda, I saw $2,500 for Pisgah Elementary for an outdoor learning center. Am I correct on that? I don't want to throw out something that I didn't see, but I certainly took notes on it from the agenda. But my question would still remain, how you evaluate giving this kind of money, even though it sounds little to one school, without evaluating what this encompasses in Buncombe County as a whole? Because $2,500 times 42 schools is, you know, a little over $100,000. So if you're going to evaluate giving money for a particular program, I'd just like to know how that's going to be done publicly, and is it put in the budget? And how did it get on the agenda? Thank you.
Mr. Rice, that was a grant that we got from the Soil and Water Conservation Group. So we got money. We just had to put it in our budget to make it balance.
You're talking about a grant from...
Yeah. That's all. Mr. Yelton?
Soil and Water.
I've answered your question. Mr. Yelton, thank you. It's just a grant that we got in, which is bookkeeping.
I'll reserve my comments on energy to that section, but I don't have to say anything to the four of you up there. I sent you an email, asked you to read, and I hope you did. I know one of you didn't. You said you didn't need to read it. You knew it all already. And that's not true. Nobody knows it all. And David, I remember when you were first commissioner, you and I met over at J&amp;S Cafeteria. Remember that? We sat out in the parking lot, and I looked at the mountains, and what did I tell you? I said, "One of these days, we're going to be just like California. We're going to be having slides here." That was many years ago. You know, sometimes you need to look past Don Yelton, what he says, to what he is saying because I also told this board about CTS many years ago. That's when you were a county commissioner, and you're the only one now that was a county commissioner at that time. And I'm sitting here, and I'm watching all these citizens, and I'm watching this board, and I've seen Bill Stanley in the past tell the state to clean the mess up. Well, it's not just the state, Deaner and EPA, that had guilt in that problem. It was this board, this past board. Because Bill Stanley was personally friends with Norman Lewis. Norman Lewis told Bill about what was going on out there, and he admitted that in one of our meetings. And Bob Hunter, who was my boss when I worked for the county, was also a supervisor at CTS. So this county has responsibility for that, and I think it's time this board steps up to the plate, admits that, and starts pushing for the right thing to be done. And I've had the privilege of being in Newport News, Virginia this past week, and I watched the Community Channel. And I saw the town council meeting, and I didn't see a distance of 50 feet to the audience. I saw the audience right up next to the people. I saw this diocese right there in front of the town council, and we still can't hear in here, Wanda. When y'all first started this meeting tonight and discussing the agenda, it was nobody in the back there I could hear. And it's getting to be just like the Buncombe County Courtrooms were. And that's not... I don't know if that's by design or by intent, but perception is 99% of reality in politics. And the perception is, you don't want us to know what you're saying and what you're doing. And I strongly suggest that if we can spend $5 million to revamp a swimming pool or $30 million for an aquatic center, that we do something to make the auditorium, in this auditorium, better for us citizens because we're the ones that have to pay the bill for all of it. Thank you.
I think that's fair. If we could double-check that, Dr. Green?
We will double-check that and see what kind of changes we can make.
We put spotlights. We feel like we're getting questioned, but that's part of it, and you have a new place. That's going to happen.
I have a plan, Dave, so you look here.
Look pretty big after Thanksgiving, anyway. Okay. Any other public comment? Again, you can speak on the Energy Matters when we get to that point in the agenda. Any other public comment tonight? Okay, thank you. We have established we do not need a... Well, we need to follow the agenda. Is there a motion to follow the agenda as we have published it? Second. Been a motion by Commissioner Frost, second by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye, which means we also do the consent agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Then we will follow it by 7-0 vote. We're not going to need a county manager report, I think we determined in pre-session. So now we move on to the election of vice chair. I would like to nominate Commissioner Frost.
Second.
Been a motion, second. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay. And a nomination. Mr. Commissioner Frye. Any other nominations? All right. Been a motion and a second. Is there a second? Do we need a second on the nomination?
Well, since you did it that way for the other one, yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Frye? If not, we'll vote on that as for lack of second. All those in favor... I'll call the question unless there's any other nominations. All those in favor of Commissioner Frost being vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Then Commissioner Frost is appointed by 6-1 vote. Congratulations. Next, we have the DWI agenda item. One of y'all, you want me to read this? Glenn, y'all be obvious is here to talk about this. If you'll come up, we put this on by acclamation, so if you could... This is an add-on. This is an add-on to the agenda that we published, but it has some timing, as I think you'll see.
I just want to say, thank you, commissioners and chairman. I apologize, Sheriff Duncan could not make it, so he asked me to step in, but he did say that should you want him to come back to answer any questions, he'd be more than happy to do that. I know it's in your agenda. I just want to cover a couple topics on here. This was actually a grant from the North Carolina State Highway Governance Safety Program in which it was a collaboration, and we are a sub-recipient with the City of Asheville Police Department, which will certainly help out as far as to reduce DWIs and safety in Buncombe County as well as in Asheville. But if I could, just briefly, some statistics that they had on here in hopes to reduce the number of incidents in Buncombe County and Asheville in this cooperative agreement. But since 2010, the number of incidents involving impaired drivers has risen steadily. There were 4,434 DWI arrests through all of the joint law enforcement agencies in Buncombe County, including the Asheville Police Department, the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, the North Carolina Highway Patrol, Woodfin Police, and Black Mountain Police Department as well. There are also more than 1,024 traffic collisions that occurred involving an impaired driver. With those, unfortunately to report, since 2010, there were 18 fatal collisions that also occurred as a result of a blood alcohol content of more than .08, which is the legal limit for DWI in North Carolina. So we just asked the board's approval to accept this grant, but it'd be a very positive and collaborative effort between the City of Asheville and Buncombe County and law enforcement here in our county. If you have to answer any questions?
This grant is for six-member task force, two new deputy positions, and pays 100% of the salary benefits, equipment, vehicles, and training for these two new positions. Is that right?
That is correct. And we're the sub-recipient, which we would get two of those positions for deputies with the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office.
How long do you see it's taking to fill these positions?
One of the reasons why we were moved, actually, because we would actually like to go ahead and get started as far as to address over the holidays, which is one of the more prominent issues for DWIs as well. So Sheriff Duncan would like to go ahead and implement this as soon as possible. So I would say within the next few weeks that he would certainly have that up and running.
All right. Any other questions or comments? This is $236,536 is the grant that we've gotten on this. Is that right?
One question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
What do we do after this money runs out with the ones that they give us money for?
One of the things, obviously, in here, that most of the things that we do take a look at is the effectiveness of the program and whether or not the continues the need for those officers to ensure whether or not that we need to continue that program. But I think certainly based off the statistics and the numbers, and certainly when the Governor's Crime Commission took a look at that, certainly there was a great need in Buncombe County to go ahead and assist to reduce that type of DWI offenses.
Well, I agree that we can do this, but when we get to the point, that basically takes the budget and runs it up for these officers if we decide to keep them.
Right. There will have to be some other type of approvals for us through the funding once the grant runs out. That is correct.
Yeah, you'd have to come back to us with either another grant or position the board to keep...
That is correct.
...that in the budget at that time when it runs out.
That is correct.
And what was the period of time for this? I'm sorry. The period of time that this money would be used for?
I believe it's five years.
Five years? Okay, well, great. Sweet.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion among the board on this proposal to... It would be a motion to receive and, I guess, approve the grant?
Make a motion.
Okay. Been a motion by Commissioner Belcher. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second by Commissioner Frost. Basically, this is to adopt the budget amendments to add both the grant and the cost that will come from the grant for administering this money. Any discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Then we will adopt this amendment by 7-0 vote. Thank you. Next up, we have the Energy Audit Report, and I'd recognize Greg Israel...
Superman.
...whom I will brag on a little bit. I went to... I think I might have said this in public before. I'll say it again. We had a... I went to a national convention on energy efficiency, and Charlotte is very much a cutting-edge place on this. I actually brought the people up here because I was so impressed with the city of Charlotte, Mecklenburg County's doing, so I brought them up to Asheville to see what we're doing. And as we came up, they met with Greg and myself, and as the day went on, it kind of occurred to me, and it occurred to them, that Greg Israel is doing things nobody else in the state was doing. And it occurred to them that they said, "You're way ahead of most people already." And it occurred to me that we're lucky to have someone like Greg Israel constantly working on this energy, and we appreciate your efforts and look forward to your report, Greg.
I appreciate that, but as we all know, it's a collective effort. It's all of us. But appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've got with me here tonight Jeremiah Leroy. Our report tonight will be primarily financials-based. Y'all have received the full report, and so we want to look at what options were given us. So any in-depth questions, we'll pull Jeremiah in. On April 26 of this year, the Board of Commissioners decided that the county needed to do an in-depth energy audit. So at that time, we engaged to do what was called an ASHRAE Level 3 audit, which is the most extensive one that's really outlined that can be done. And the purpose of that report was to identify, first of all, which of our facilities were the biggest consumers of electricity, and further to identify what reduction measures could be found that would result in lowering our consumption and our utility cost. The third item on that audit was to take those measures that had been identified and organize them into a plan that would result in a 2% per year reduction in energy usage and thereby gaining the reduced cost as well. When we sent the RFQ out, I think it was 14 responses that we got, and 13 of them were from highly qualified companies. One of them was from a guy up in Michigan who I don't think he knew what he was getting into. But all of the companies, when we first talked to them, the confidence level of them was superb, was high. They said, "You know, we have no doubt we can meet your needs." And so as we started interviewing them, and we provided them with our records on where the county was and cost per square feet and the work we've done in the past, that confidence level came to a kind of a medium to a mid-low. And it was said several times, "We're sure that we can find you measures that will save you money and reduce your energy uses, but we're not sure that we can come back to you with a 2% plan. It just depends on, you know, what are we finding?" So we went through the process, moved forward, and we contracted with Shaw Environmental to do this report that you have today. Shaw came back to us midway through the report, and their comment was that Buncombe County is operating on a higher plane than most local and state governments. We're so far ahead. The actual comment was, "Most local and state governments have done nothing as far as energy conservation." And so it's just a real... It shows the effort that's been forth by this entire county. So the reason I'm saying all this is, this report not only puts points forward to what we can do, the measures that's been identified, but it also, more so, points back to what's been accomplished. back to what's been accomplished so far by this Board and by the county. And that being said, you know, for us to come up and say today, if you told me today's, you know, so Greg, we're going to implement, you're going to reduce, you know, 2% per year regardless, I don't know that that's possible, not without spending a whole lot of money. You know, we didn't start at zero, is where I'm getting at. We've been doing this. It's, when you start at zero, it's easy to go back and say, okay, here's all of our savings, so, you know, let's move forward. But as this county grows and as our services expand, you're going to see our utility costs rise, and you're going to see our energy usage rise. You can't open a new building without seeing those two things happen. But the goal here is to keep our cost per square foot at a reasonable rate, and, you know, do everything we can. So being given the opportunity to do this energy audit, it's given us a great tool for sustainability planning, and these following slides are going to outline our investment opportunities that have been identified through this audit. So Slide 1 is the 10-year plan that was brought to us by Shaw Environmental. And I'd like to say before we look at it too deeply that the way we've worked in the past is typically we have what's called a three, five, and seven rule. If we can get a three-year return on investment, everybody's happy, it's a no-brainer, find the money today. You know, if it's five years, identify the funds, and if they're there, earmark them. If it's seven years, we talk about it and we try to budget for that return on investment. Some of these items on here, you'll see, have as high as a 40-year payback on them. And when it all, when you use all these items together, the 1.5-year payback, the 40-year paybacks, the 17s, you know, it brings it down into the 15, 15 to 18-year range on payback on this 10-year plan. This plan, if you choose to go with it, would cost the county 3.5 million dollars. And with a, after the 10th year, you would be seeing 250,000 dollars a year in return on investment. Prior to that, it's accumulative. The first year, you get 36,000, this next year, so you add them up as you go. This was the plan that Shaw was supposed to put forward that showed that we could do 2% per year reduction. Some of the years, they got 2%, some of the years, they got 1%. So, but it just shows that we're looking at facilities here and the existing equipment in these facilities, and upgrading these facilities, upgrading the equipments, the equipment in them, we could not reach that 2% that we had. The, if you're reading your large plan, it was the large audit that was delivered to you, you'll see that it said 2.9 million dollars on the bottom of that 10-year plan. But that did not account for escalation costs. That's where Jeremiah came in, and Finance did their work. And it shows you have the escalation for construction cost, and we actually toned it back from what was recommended for us to use, because I thought it was a little bit too high. Shows utility rate, cost, whether they increase or decrease, and it shows the cost to borrow the money, if you have to go borrow the money to do this. So that's how we came up with that 3.5 million dollars for the 10-year plan. The next slide is a project summary of that 10-year plan, and we won't stay here but just a minute, but the reason I wanted to do it in there is it kind of breaks it apart, and it's easier to see what we're talking about. And it gives our yearly cost, but the last two lines show the BTU per hour reduction that we would see if this plan were implemented. And you can see at the end of the 10-year, it shows a 13.3 million, 13.3 million BTU per hour reduction in our usage. And CCF, if you're not familiar with that term, is 100 cubic feet of water. That's the way we buy our water. And so over the 10-year plan, you see a 5,900, 100 cubic feet of water as a savings. The next plan that we wanted to put to you is a five-year project plan. And all this is, is taking the Shaw plan and cutting it off at five years. So that plan, total cost for it is 846,000 dollars with a 173,000 dollar annual savings. The simple payback on that says five years, but that's assuming that you're receiving that 173,000 year one. So when you stage it out over five years, there again, it's cumulative, it would probably reach out around eight years on the payback on that. It just seems, it just seemed best to give it to you in simple ROI terms and explain the other. Next one is also a five-year summary, and basically what it does is tells you the same thing, but it shows you that over five years, it would be 5.3 million BTU per hour reduction on that one, and 5,700, 100 cubic feet on the water. This next plan is the plan that I would like to bring to you as the one that General Services sees makes the most sense. Got together with Jeremiah and Finance, and we looked at this, and we decided, instead of looking at it in a yearly plan, let's look at it as a return on investment plan and see what that showed us. So we looked everything, we looked at everything that was seven years or less, and some of them were 7.1, 7.4, but I went ahead and put them in there. And decided we wanted to break it into two phases and deliver it to you that way. So the first phase would be everything that had a five-year or less payback, and that was nine items on this plan here. The total cost for it is 246,000 dollars with a 98,000 dollar annual savings. I believe, with the exception of one item, and I think we could get that item in there, I think this project could be completed in one year. And so you would see that return on investment the first year.
Greg, I apologize, but can you say the total amount and the return again, those two numbers?
The total amount for the five-year return on investment project is 246,570 dollars. And the annual savings on that project's list is 98,900 dollars. And I believe that this could be done in a year, maybe most a year and a half, so to get the savings coming back in. And it would show a, you know, a 2.5-year payback on the whole project. This plan here has a 40% per year return on investment, which, that's a good plan. I mean, anything you can get 40% on, you need to jump on. But, and if we complete the two phases, which I'll show you the other one in just a second, that's basically the Shaw five-year plan split, we would still see the 5.3 million BTUs per hour as a reduction if we did both projects. I hope that says seven-year ROI, I can't see it.
7.5.
This is the seven-year plan, and so basically, we took these items that had roughly a seven-year, between seven and five-year payback. This plan calls for 600, 423,000 dollars as your investment, 600, 600,423 dollars as your investment with a 74,600 dollar return. This one, you know, it's not a bad idea, it's not what you say is the best idea, it's got a 12% return on investment for this one, and it would take about eight years to get your money back out of this plan. But these are, these are the, really as far as we would go normally. When, the other ones where you get into 20-year paybacks, and a good example is like the jail, that's one of the items, replacing the boilers in it, and it's got a 40-year payback. We never replace boilers that size in a building. They're just so huge, logistically, it's tough to start with, but basically, you just rebuild them all the time, and you know, you, something, something needs fixing, you fix it and you put it back together. It does, that's how they were trying to reach the 2%. It does show a savings, but at, you know, at 40-plus years' payback, that's such a small savings that it's, y'all, you know, it's a question of whether, whether that's an option y'all want to go to with the 10-year plan. But that is the projects that we'd like to present to you, and there again, the return on investment projects are the ones that I'd like to present to you, is asking you to fund in the, in the 14, 15-year term. So any questions for me or Jeremiah, either one?
Greg? Heard you say something at the start of, you didn't think that we could get to 2%. It could be one, it could be under, we've got two different plans, 200,000, 600. When I came on this board, all of a sudden, and I hear, we need new elevators in the new jail, and your words was 600,000 dollars. I thought, whoa, it's 20 years old, and we got to put new elevators in. But it comes to the fact now that we're in modern times, no different what you're getting ready to buy to put in other things, is we had a elevator in the old courthouse that was put in in 1928. It ran the prisoners up to the top for years and did stuff. But they took a elevator out of a building that was built in 1928 that was still working. As we go along, and we get panels, and we get all the computer stuff, and we get everything that happens, no different what's over at that jail, how long is this stuff going to last, do we know? I mean, we're going to have a payback a little bit, but if it don't stretch out to, if it's 20 years versus something that's going to last 40 years, where are we going?
I understand what you're saying, and a lot of these items, it's, you know, it's item-specific, you know? Let's just take the thermostats is one of the items on there. You know, what's the life of a thermostat? It all depends on the life of the software nowadays that's running that thermostat. You know, we could be, we could be using them 10 years from now, but if, you know, if the building automation program that we're using gets changed and everything goes out, it could wash out five or six years from now and be gone. Big-ticket items like your boilers, like I say, you typically never replace those, you just work on them. You know, smaller items, one of them is a water conservation project at the jail, where we're buying all these specific little timers that limit the water supply. The life, life cycle of that timer is probably less than two years, so it's a replacement item every two years, you know?
Well, that's like I talk to electrician and these sensors that you go in the door that turns the lights on. They're pretty high-dollar, but they're not, they don't last very long, you know? People that turn switches on, you know, sometimes they don't turn them off, but the lights are on, the things that we can do, but when you're spending, from what I understand, those switches are not cheap to pick it up when you walk in the door. And if they go bad in five years, then here you got to go back and do it all over again, so where's your savings at? So that's, that's my problem.
Well, and I, and I see what you're saying. There is, you know, there is a savings with the occupancy sensors. You do lose, you lose some of them at six months, right after the warranty runs out, but then you have some of them that'll run seven years, and some of them that'll run five years. I think there's a savings there, that's true savings, but you can't really guess whether it's going to last two years or five years.
Well, that even goes down here. The lighting was terrible in this room as Mr. Yelton had spoken. We put lights up so you could see us. Well, half of them didn't work the first night, you know? So the transformers and some of them, I guess, went bad pretty quick. And they could possibly do it again, and that's, that's 1,200 dollars worth of lights, just lights, not counting the labor it costs to put them in. And if we start, ended up putting transformers in them every six months.
It eats into your savings, definitely.
Exactly, it's gone.
Yep.
I think also, didn't I read, which is, I think, a testament to the culture of your group, did I not read that in, when they were looking at the lighting, that they, that 80% of the lights that were supposed to be off were off? Did I not read that somewhere in there that, you know, when they were doing their test, it was basically that y'all were doing a really good job in that area? And I think that I did take the time to read this, and I might have needed you at some times beside of me trying to decipher some of it, but it, I think it's a good outline, a good, that's not the right word, but a good comparison, I guess, to see what you're, what we're already doing in some areas, and to see some suggestions in some things that we might look at. I think, you know, the Board, you, County Manager, you know, we've got to determine, is that a, is that a good return, and can we do it at this time? And there's some things when you look at there, that the return is obvious, it's just not, it's just not there, and some of it's, some of it's, some of it's really good, but some of it's at all or nothing, like, you know, where they were talking about the 11-seers versus the 18. I mean, they were talking about replacing, going and taking 11-seer units, which are fine for the, you know, for the most part, and replacing them with, just across the board, 18. And to your saying about the boilers, you wouldn't do that, that way at your home, neither would you recommend that. Here, you'd replace them as needed and probably upgrade them at that time, I would assume.
Right.
But I applaud y'all's work in the past, and your continued work, so I appreciate that.
Well, and there, and there are actually four different matrices that we deal with. You have the one-to-three-year payback, and if you look at the report, ladies and gentlemen, there's a green light for that one, you know? The three-to-seven-year, there's a yellow light, and then for the seven-year plus, there's a red light, because that may not be worth doing, because it takes too long to get your money back. In addition to that icon, we have the impact on staff operations. Green means there's no impact, doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't, there's no, there's no additional expense. Yellow means it has a minor impact on our operations, and red means a yellow. I mean, red means, red means red. Red means that we have a major effect on operations. There's a icon, a matrix of available grant and incentive money. Green means it's readily available. Yellow means it might be available as a federal tax incentive. And red.
Probably not a chance.
Excuse me, yellow means grants available as a tax incentive, and red is there's no available funding. The final matrix is the ease of implementation. Green means it's real easy to do, just with internal staff. Yellow means we may have to have outside contractors work with us. And red means that we have to require design and installation services. So, you know, what I liked about this report is you've really got a lot of ways to look at it, and it's not just, here's what you ought to do. It's like, well, you can do this, it might cost you a lot, it might take you longer to get it back, you might have to get outside help, you might have to spend money to get there, or you might get money in to do it. So all this information, I think, is critical to make good decisions, because we, if there's, if there's funding available for some of this, it probably moves up on the list. If it's going to take design and implementation, we've got to pause and make sure that it's a good investment for the taxpayer money. And that's what, I really applaud that, I appreciate you having that in there. We've been doing this informally, but I'd never seen it just spelled out in such a graphic visual way.
And that's one of the things that I really like so much about this report is if, if y'all said, we're going to do nothing this year, we can, we can take that book, and each year, I can go pull it out and say, look, you know, hey, Wanda, can you give me 250,000 dollars, look at this one, all of its green lights, you know, and we could, you know, you can, you can implement this, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to live or die, it can be implemented over the years, or it can be implemented all at one time, it's just however y'all choose to do it.
So there was 27 items, I think, and seven, 17 of them were red, and the others were green or yellow, 10 of them. So basically, you've taken the, those 10 and prioritized them, you've taken the green, the three to five years, green and yellow.
Correct.
Three to five years, and recommended that to, to the Board?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to comment, I'd like to say that Mr. Israel was, I have the utmost confidence in your work, I have talked with a number of your employees, y'all do a great job and appreciate everything you do. I'd like to address the question regarding failure rates. And I'm going to use an analogy, because we all have homes, we all have, that's a smaller budget we can all really grasp. About three years ago, I replaced an old antiquated heat pump, and it was a good investment in that I had, I saw immediate return, I saw my power bill drop, I saw an improvement in the heating of my house. So I had got a quality of life issue, I also got a monetary return on that, Duke Power also provided, subsidized putting it in with a 1,500 dollar rebate on that. So this year, that heat pump had a failure, a fairly major failure. Much to my pleasure, it turned out to be under warranty. But had I had to replace that with my dollar, it was still a good investment. It still impacted my monthly cash flow during the heating and cooling season. So there is no electromechanical device that is going to be guaranteed 100%. This is part of what we experienced, that should not... is part of what we experienced, that should not determine whether we make these decisions, whether a device may or may not fail. We have to look at the overall value and what is the overall return, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the report? All right. I do not think we, do we have to, should we approve the report, or do we just, just accepting the report? Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Now, with our agenda, there has been a resolution proposed that I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to get this on the table so we can start talking about this. The resolution was proposed by Commissioner Newman, and basically it regards Buncombe County Energy Independence. And to be procedural, I'm going to move that we, to get it on the table, I'm going to move that we approve Commissioner Newman's resolution as it was presented, and then I'm going to ask Commissioner Newman to talk about, we've had many, many conversations with public, with, with each other, with various folks in the community, and I think there may be some other issues that have come up that Commissioner Newman wanted to address, but let me make that motion to put it on the table. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Because a second by Commissioner Frost.
Mr. Chairman, we're, we're just putting it on the table.
Just put it on the table, I think there's going to be, and then what I envision, Commissioner King, is to have discussion and amendments proposed to that. I don't think it's going to go the way we had it precisely, but I, I want to make sure everybody has their say and we do it correctly under the rules of order. So let me recognize Commissioner Newman to give a presentation on his resolution, and then any changes or amendments that he may propose, and then we'll continue to discuss. Then we're going to have, once we get all our amendments in here, I'll ask the public to comment on everything. Commissioner Newman? And I have, I've asked him to, when he does presentation, to go down the front, unless you want to do it from here, your, your call.
Let me, let me make a few comments on the resolution, and then I'll, I've got a couple of slides I want to show, and I'll go up front and, and do that. Thank you for, I want to thank everyone for their consideration of this issue. We initially talked about undertaking an, an additional energy initiative on top of all of the great work that the Buncombe County has done over the years to be very responsible in its use of energy management back at our retreat this spring, and I think had a very good discussion about it then, and asked our staff to go out and look for ways to, to continue to make improvements in this, in this, in this area. And like my colleagues, I am extremely appreciative of how seriously the staff have taken this, and I've had the, the benefit of being able to review a lot of different energy audits, different points in time, and I think the work that Shaw Environmental did on this is truly, truly outstanding, both in its, its comprehensive nature, as well as its, its accessibility for people who are not necessarily experts in these kind of energy efficiency measures. So it's, anyway, it's a great report and gives us a lot of great information to start thinking about where we go from here. There was a resolution published on our agenda on Thursday, but there have been several suggestions for some modifications to the resolution, and I'd like to go ahead and propose an amendment to the motion reflecting what some of those changes would be, and then I'll, and then I'll say a few things about the overall.
Would you mind reading the whole, the amended, the resolution, because I, I didn't read it before because it was yours, but if you could read your amended, and we'll, we'll consider those.
Sure. I will, I will read it as, I propose as amended, and for the staff benefits and, and the citizens who are here, I've circulated, I'm sorry, I've got some additional copies in the back, I can get some more copies, but I've circulated a version that has a red line that indicates some of the language that's being removed from the original resolution, and some proposed new resolution, new language based on suggestions, several of which came from staff over the last couple of days, based on Commissioner input. Resolution regarding Buncombe County Energy Independence. Whereas clean air, clean water, and healthy lands are vital to the people of Buncombe County and Western North Carolina, whereas continuous efforts are needed to further reduce air pollution to improve public health and the health of the natural environment, whereas our nation's dependence on energy from regions of the world with hostile and democratic governments is a threat to our economy and national security, whereas the American Association for the Advancement of Science has determined the scientific evidence is clear, global climate change caused by human activities is occurring now, and it is a growing threat to society. Whereas if unchecked, climate change threatens future generations with more frequent and severe storms and flooding, increasing droughts, water shortages, greater risk of severe wildfires, and low-lying coastal regions are threatened by rising sea levels and greater storm surges, including North Carolina's irreplaceable Outer Banks. Whereas there's strong scientific evidence that air pollution needs to be reduced by 80% in order to avoid the most severe and irreversible impacts of climate change in future generations. Whereas Buncombe County has a history of taking a proactive role in energy management, including the development of a 1.4 megawatt landfill gas project, which converts methane pollution into useful energy, installing energy-efficient windows in the county courthouse, and utilizing a range of alternative fuel vehicles in the county fleet. Whereas Buncombe County commissioned an energy audit of its 10 largest facilities by Shaw Environmental, which identifies numerous steps that can be taken to improve energy efficiency and reduce energy costs. And whereas Buncombe County is committed to being a national leader for clean energy and demonstrating practical achievable steps that can be taken to reduce air pollution and to be an example for other public sector and private sector organizations, now therefore be it resolved by the Buncombe County Commissioners that, one, Buncombe County establishes a goal to reduce its carbon footprint by 2% annually until it achieves a total reduction of 80%. This commitment is inclusive of all direct county operations, including the energy required for its buildings and the fuel required, the fuel required for county vehicles. Two, Buncombe County Commissioners support implementation of the energy efficiency recommendations outlined in the Shaw Environmental Audit for years one through five. Three, Buncombe County Commissioners instruct staff to include the fiscal year 2015 budget plan to implement projects for the Shaw Environmental Audit. And for clarification, that should be for years one through, for years one through five. Buncombe County, four, Buncombe County Commissioners instruct staff to provide an annual updates and a five-year plan to achieve the objectives identified in this resolution. Five, that this resolution shall be effective upon its adoption. So that is a proposed amendment to the main resolution.
Okay, Mr. County Attorney, can we do a substitution, or how, how would be the best way procedurally to?
I would take that as a motion to amend. If it gets a second, then you can vote on the amendment. It's a motion to amend.
Is your mic on? Is that on?
Yeah, it's on. It's a motion to amend the original motion.
Okay.
If it gets seconded, then you would take a vote on that.
Vote on that immediately, and then we would, then we would be discussing this amended from then on.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'd like to, okay, hold on. Mr. Commissioner Frost, go ahead.
We have another amendment. How do we tie that one into this amendment?
I think you have to deal with this one first, and then after that, you can make another motion to amend and go back through the same process.
Okay.
All right, then Commissioner Newman has made a, a motion to amend the original proposal. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by Commissioner Frost. We will take up this amendment first, and then any other amendments will do follow.
And Chairman, again, if not, could I could give a couple of slides, kind of, as additional background for the?
And then we'll have a discussion after that, right?
Yes, yes.
And when does the public weigh in?
And I think, I, I think, once we get a final version, I'm going to ask the public comments, the board, to do it that way, or would you, would you prefer to do it, let's get the final version? I, I think, to see, to get the final version, then we want to hear.
I kind of would like to hear from the public to inform, to inform the final version.
I want them to inform before we get to a final version.
Okay, is that, I, I could do either, I think either way is fine.
I, I'd like that, too.
Okay, that's good. Then, what we'll do then procedurally wise, let's, let's hear from Commissioner Newman, hear about what you're doing, then we'll hear from the public. There will be, I will just tell folks, there'll probably be some other amendments before this is over, but, you know, let's hear that, and that might influence some future amendments, so that's good. All right, Commissioner?
Great, could the PowerPoint presentation be put up on the screen? Okay, and I'll go through this, I think this should not take very long. Some of this is information that's repetitive with some of the information in the resolution itself, and some of it is just some additional observations on the, the economics of the implementation. Okay, so, I've actually never read a PowerPoint from here, so.
[laughing]
But the basic purpose and need for the proposed resolution, there's really two primary purposes to it. The first, as the resolution outlines, is to, is to really, you know, for the county to, to make, establish a long-term goal for reducing our energy use and associated carbon footprint. The cost of the importance of providing leadership on this issue, thank you. And addressing, addressing the, doing our part to provide leadership in addressing the threat of climate change for future generations. But secondly, the county manages multiple facilities, a large fleet, and we need to, to make smart decisions about how to most efficiently manage our utility and fuel costs for the long term. So those are the two primary purposes for the initiative. As Greg outlined, the, the energy audit of all the facilities look at a wide range of, of potential improvements, some of which have very rapid paybacks, others which have much longer paybacks. So the proposal that's been made is specifically to implement the energy audit measures that are recommended for the first five years. This slide identifies that the total cost for implementing those measures is estimated to be about $776,000, but that did not include the annual index for inflation in terms of potential construction cost increases that Greg's mentioned, so if you add that in, it's a little, it's about $100,000 more, so about $870,000. But if you implemented all those measures today, they're estimated to have an annual recurring financial benefit of about $173,000. So, and as, and as various folks have observed, different kinds of technologies have different useful lives, some are longer, some are shorter, but if you worked under the assumption that these improvements we make all only lasted 10 years, and then they all died at the same time, and if you also assume that energy prices conservatively go up at 3% per year, the measures identified in the audit over the first 10-year period would save 1.988 million dollars. So, an investment of less than $900,000 to save close to $2 million. So, more than a million dollars of net benefit to Buncombe County taxpayers if we implement the measures identified during the first five years. Next, the scientific basis for, for this proposal. And I'd just like to read, you know, this, this slide quotes several of the major national scientific organizations in our country, and I won't read them all, but, you know, just, just to, just to quote one of them, from the National Academy of Sciences. Climate change is occurring is caused, is caused largely by human activities and poses a significant risk for, and in many cases is already affecting, a broad range of human and natural systems. And we know that issues related to air pollution and climate are national and international issues, these are not issues that are within Buncombe County's control by ourselves, but in my opinion, what's badly needed around these issues are, are groups that, that exercise leadership and are willing to take action and demonstrate practical achievable steps that can be used to, to make a difference on this, and to be a model that others can follow. These same scientific organizations tell us that even if we are able to achieve an 80% reduction in carbon emissions as a country and an international community, over future years, this will not stop global warming. But what the best scientific evidence of our day tells us is that if we can reduce our emissions into this order of magnitude, we can avoid the most severe and irreversible impacts of climate change on future generations, which could include sea level rise, more dangerous wildfire conditions, severe droughts, water shortages, and habitat destruction and species extinction. Stated in the resolution, the Buncombe County Energy Independence Initiative would establish a goal of a 2% annual reduction until an 80% reduction is ultimately achieved over a period of many years. These kinds of, these kinds of commitments and goals, Buncombe County is not alone in pursuing these kind of goals, and have traditionally received bipartisan support. Republican Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, when he was governor, issued an executive order for his state establishing an identical goal, which, which, which was subsequently codified into legislation. Our country's armed forces have made similar commitments, which were established under the presidency of George W. Bush. The US military has a commitment to reduce its own carbon footprint by 15% by the year 2015, and is well on the way to, to meeting that goal. As we've said before, Buncombe County has a tradition of, of taking leadership in this arena, and has already implemented many great steps to save taxpayers' money and reduce our energy usage, and we will build on that track record of success. As we mentioned earlier, I appreciate the chance to initially discuss this proposal in the spring and the, the real progress we've made since then, and I appreciate the Commission's consideration of this, this proposal tonight. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Newman, and then we'll take public comment, then we'll vote on this First Amendment.
And David, if I could make just one other, one other, one other thought I meant to share. I appreciated the additional thoughts that, that Greg had tonight about, about implementation of this measure, and, you know, the, the audit itself kind of lays out different steps that could be taken each year over a five-year period, and based on what I'm hearing from Greg, there would be certain, a certain set of measures that we might even implement on a somewhat faster schedule, some of the ideas that, that have the best payback. So, you know, I think the intention of this resolution is to affirm our support for, for the measures, all the measures that were identified in the first five years, they all have estimated paybacks of less than, you know, seven, seven and a half years, I believe. But I don't think there's anything in this proposal that in any way ties the staff's hands in terms of which sequence they pursue in implementing these, if they want to do some of these faster than, than what the audit recommends, obviously that's, you know, that's great. So I think there's, this, the hope is that this preserves some flexibility that still establishes the goals for the direction that, that we want to go in.
Can I make a comment? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Frost, Vice Chair of Commerce, excuse me.
Well, not yet. Yeah. Oh, really? It starts now? Okay. Okay. I want to reiterate everything about the staff's good work, but I also want to reiterate, one, Brownie, for his commitment to this, and I also want to thank all of us, because we've had endless, endless conversations about it. And this board is committed to good stewardship of your tax dollars. But sometimes you have to look at a bigger picture. We're all committed to parks, we're all committed to preserving land. When we, when we build a park, when we preserve land, we don't say what's our value, when we know if it was developed, it would have a greater value. There are some things, when we look at the future of our county, that you can't put a dollar amount on, and this is one of those things. We want to preserve things, we want our grandchildren to be here, our great-grandchildren, this is, to me, a no-brainer, and so I'm very appreciative of everybody's work.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Frost's comments, he's spot on. We have had a great deal of conversation over this, and we, we've worked on it. I'd also like to point out, there are no, we're not imposing any penalties on the county if we're unable to make it. Some years we may do a little better, some years we may be a little, a little less, I think I understood from Commissioner Newman. In regard to the resolution, the thing I'd like to say is, is we, we have had numerous conversations about this, and, and as I see this, this is a compromise. I mean, there, there are things that Commissioner Newman wanted in, that have been taken out, there are things that other people have wanted taken out or put in. So, I mean, we could wrangle all night over which proposal is the best, or which, or I shouldn't say proposal, but which resolution is the best, but the bottom line is, we're, we're going to vote here shortly on, basically doing. to vote here shortly on, basically doing what we've been doing, and that is working toward energy efficiency in Buncombe County. Mr. Israel does a fabulous job with that. This I see as an affirmation of what has been done long before I got here and will continue to be doing. So, you know, I'm saying that I'll support this resolution, because we need to come together and get this done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. King, any other comments before we have public hearing?
I would like to say one more thing.
Mr. Vice Chair Frost?
There are some who would like to make this a political issue, a Democrat or Republican issue, and this is not. Good stewardship of our land and our tax dollars, that doesn't go on party lines, and I'm proud of this board that we don't look at it that way.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Frost?
Yeah, it is partisan, because it's one-sided. We have people that believe both sides of climate change. As I said to different people last night, we can all have our opinions, but some opinions, 50% of the opinions is climate change and carbon footprint, or the hockey stick is broke, because this, climate change is not happening. You have so many for it, but you have the same amount against it. My issue is to...
Okay. I'm not going to let anybody blurt out in the audience. You're going to get your chance to talk, it's the commissioner's chance to talk, we want to hear from you, but we want you to hear what we have to say, too. So if anybody blurts out again, I'm going to ask you to leave. We're not going to do that here. We're going to be ladies and gentlemen, everybody's going to respect differing opinions, and we're not going to have it. So you're all warned, I'll tell you, you're going to be out of here if you do it, okay?
One other thing, since we had that, I want to know where they live, you know, how long they've lived here, and what district they're in, because we represent districts, too. You know, that's, we've got to see what's in here. My people from my district, which is Ms. Frost's district, have contacted me, and a lot of them don't like it. I think people have had emails from both sides. The main thing is, is Buncombe County wants to save energy. That man has done a good job, you said he's done a fantastic job. We don't need to be in here making a resolution to tie his hands. He says we need a $600,000 elevator? Then we need to believe what he says. You know, if everybody wants to go back to the Dark Ages, because we can't get to 80% period, turn the lights off, get your candles out, and let's go. But the main thing is, we're seven elected officials. We're not sitting up here to try to make this a party issue in any way, shape, or form. When you put one side on it and leave the second side out, I understand Mr. Newman has his side, I understand I have my side, but I'm not going to put my side out, ever, in a forum like this to try to put a resolution on the records of any county, ever. This is political, and we have another resolution, it's all energy efficient, it all does the same thing, you know, let's go, but let's just put it this way. You know, we see buildings that's got solar panels on them, that's supposedly going to be this great savings. I've got a friend about a quarter of a million dollars' worth of them. He had a big savings because he'd sold some property. He was getting 11, or 18 cents a kilowatt, five banks of them. Now he gets one quarter of a cent kilowatt for five banks of them. He don't make the $700 out of a quarter of a million dollars investment to pay his $700 insurance bill. So, we don't need to be engineers. I built Star Car Motors, you're an attorney, you shoe horses, Holly, you work for YW. And one guy sold mobile homes, we got one guy's lobbyist, and he works for a solar panel company. And then we got one lady that has her own little business for dogs and biscuits. We don't need, I don't need, we're representing, I had 20,007 votes. That's the people, plus in my district. This lady down here had almost as many votes as I did. Simple fact. But if this is totally political, and if we don't stop it now, it, we came in here as seven people from two different parties that wanted to work together. This is not working together. All we're going to say is, Brownie, we're going to save energy. First, we're getting ready to go borrow another $140 million, because we want two city schools, a county school, and AB Tech. We're going to be $450 million in debt, pretty soon. It's just small county, you know, 450. So, we've got a good credit rating, because the more you buy, the better your credit rating is. I think we need to do Craig's two-year plan, through the $200,000, if we have the money in 2015, because I will not, we went up eight cents on the taxpayers in this county, eight cents. And you think, and believe it or not, I voted against the budget, but I went out and worked hard to find some money to cut one cent out, help cut one cent out of that, and I still had to vote against it, or it would have been nine cents. If you don't believe me, ask the lady over here. But I worked really hard, and I'm going to continue to work hard, but I'm going to trust Mr. Israel, I'm going to trust Mr. Creighton, and we're not always going to agree, and none of us up here is always going to agree. But they ran this county a whole lot longer than I've sat up here, or any of us have. So, their decision is what I'm asking them to save us some energy, pretty simple for them. Greg, save us some energy. I want to look at the light bill at the end of the month, and if it, last November, it was, that bar on that light bill was here, let's see if we can move that bar down. That's what you call saving energy. We have issues with a whole lot of insurance cars going out of the county. We're letting them go out of the county. That's $34,000 a year in fuel usage, just because we want to let them get 20 miles out of the county. So, if we're going to get serious about this, we're going to pull them back in. You know, this, that's where I'm going. We're trying to talk something up that's supposedly going to be fantastic. It says in both of these things that we're going to get fuel efficient. Well, you can't get fuel efficient when you're giving fuel away.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments before we start on public comment?
I'd like to do my comments after I hear from the people.
Yeah, I would, too. I would, too.
Any other pre-public comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just observe that I do not think citizens should be required to talk about how long they've lived in this community in order to give public comments.
I'm not going to require that. The comment was that we do not, you're a citizen, we're not, I'm not going to ask you to say how long you've been here.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments beforehand?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I'd like to say that, first of all, I, all of us up here work very hard, and we've all worked very hard on saving money, not just saving money, but trying to deliver the services and the things to this county that all of the citizens want. And we strive very hard to hear both sides of all issues, and I feel like, for the most part, we do. We can't always make everyone happy 100% of the time, it's just not possible. Any of us up here can decide whether they, Commissioner Newman feels very passionately about this, others don't. My job is not to sit up here and pass judgment either way on whether there's a problem worldwide or whatever, I'm a county commissioner in Buncombe County. I'm here to, hopefully, to make a decision on what is good for the county as a whole. And what I see here is an overall tax savings and a continuation of what we've been doing, and just simply an affirmation of that. I'm not making any political statements for, against anybody's position, but simply looking at the facts as they're presented, and that is all we're doing. Thank you.
I do want to make one thing clear, maybe, I'm going to reserve my comments till later, too.
You can do both, Mr. Bell.
But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we've got a, we've got a resolution, and then we're going to have a proposal that's going to have some dollars associated with it, so that we're handling them separately, right? Got two different things.
Well, just for clarification, the motion does include some specific language about requesting that the staff include the recommendations in the upcoming budget, which of course we'll have a whole separate vote on it when we do it, so it's, but it does give some direction around the budget we'll prepare.
Yes.
That is, that is some of the language in the resolution that's been made.
Okay, so, what was presented, the savings under five years, or under three years, or whatever, the 40% return that Mr. Israel presented, is that going to be considered tonight? Or are we considering any of the dollars associated with it?
Just for clarification, the motion includes, and as it relates to specific budgetary considerations, we give direction to the staff to include the measures outlined in the energy audit for years one through five. Does not, does not say what schedule those need to happen on, so my sense is that we give the flexibility that if we want to do some of those sooner, as suggested in terms of a 40% return on the, kind of the lowest-hanging fruit, so to speak, I think that certainly does not preclude that, but it simply says that we're giving direction in terms of support for the year, the measures for years one through five, all of which have the less than, the 7.5-year or less return, and to request that the staff begin preparing for that in the budget that we will review this spring.
To clarify, none of it will be until the next budget?
And if I can say what I think we've heard, one is, it's a proposal that we, that we follow Shaw, but we can be more aggressive than that, and I think Mr. Israel's proposal was a little more aggressive than that on the early, or the quicker payback projects.
All right, let me, let me just see, let me just read it again. Buncombe County Commissioners instruct staff to include in the 2015 budget a plan to implement projects for the Shaw environmental audit, year one through five, that include a 7.5-year or less payback. And then we instruct the staff to provide annual updates and a five-year plan to achieve the objective. So, we are, we're not allocating money, but we're definitely giving the green light to staff to move on this at their discretion.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Israel? The two, okay, the one, the, the return on investment plan that you presented, that was $246,570 and a return of 98, 9 per year. That's the one through five. That's, that's the, is that the green lights, the...
Pretty much. It's a five-year or less payback.
Five-year or less payback. Okay, so, that is addressed in this, right?
The way I, the way I see it's coming out, as Commissioner Newman has said, we'll use years one through five of the Shaw plan, and basically you are, but you're just using it in the order that I set it in, not Shaw. So I'm wanting us to do those five-year or less paybacks first, get that money coming back in, and actually try to use that maybe to fund the seven-year, five to seven-year paybacks, and accomplish all of it within a five-year period.
Okay.
Okay.
But it goes back to what Mr., excuse me, what Mr. Israel says, the $99,000 coming back in on the two-year plan. When we get that paid back in the two and a half years, if we have the money to do it in the budget, okay? Because we don't know where we're going to be, because in DC, they don't know where they're going to be, so who knows what unmandated things are we going to be stuck with to pay for that we're not sure of? So let's look at the low side, you know, and that's, even in, whatever happens tonight, look at the low side of it, let Mr. Israel make the decisions. The $99,000 in, after two and a half years, then you can look at the other 400 or 350 it's talking about, and maybe even more, but you've got 99 that you can utilize each year to help toward that. That's, you know, that's, you get the money first and see how it works, then you can utilize that money to help toward the other money after, after that project without going, us saying we're going to take $600,000, and it's like I said, we're, we're going to be deep in debt anyway, and we still don't know what's going to happen in DC.
I have a question for Dr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Israel.
If I understand correctly, staff will have a huge amount of discretion on how this money's spent and when it's spent, is that correct?
I hear that we have discretion on how, how we bring it back, and I think what, what we are hearing is that we will be a little more aggressive in bringing it back than what the energy audit says, because we can get a better pay, a pretty quick payback on several of these projects.
Okay. In your opinion, does this in any way put the county at peril?
To do what's in the resolution and have, bring back the five-year plan, doesn't, doesn't do that. I mean, there's only one really relatively expensive project in that, and we'll have to, you know, we might put that in year four, but at least we will bring back the five-year plan and get all, I think there's nine of the items done, but the first five are really low-hanging fruit, good payback and good return.
So what I'm hearing, it will not put the county in peril, we won't be in dire straits as a result of this.
And you'll have an opportunity to hear that and know that every year in the budget process, too, so.
All right. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, Dr. Green, this will not affect our bond rating or our overall indebtedness as far as the, and if you could talk about, just, just so we get it out there, about the mortgage, what the equivalent, so that people can kind of put it in household terms.
If, when I look at our debt right now, and I have to always look at Donna, it's like having a $65,000 mortgage on a $200,000 house. Now, we are going to be coming to you in just a couple of months to look at borrowing money for AB Tech and the school systems and the GE project. So, we've finished most, most of the county projects, so now we're moving to projects that are primarily funded with restricted revenues. That will change that ratio some, and we have not run that number yet, but the ratio will change at that point in time.
But this, this, if we institute what we're talking about here, that alone would not change the mortgage.
That's operating budget, very much operating budget, and they look for us to, for our revenues to always exceed our expenditures there, and that's the thing they'll focus on, and we will bring you a budget that does that.
It's really two separate issues, our choice to continue to invest in the infrastructure and community, and invest in this energy audit, in this energy independence.
They would not look at that level of detail at all in the budget, they're just going to look to see that we're, that we're doing responsible things with our budget and that our revenues cover our expenditures, they will not look at that level of detail.
All right. Any other questions pre-public comment? And we'll also, after we hear from the public, we will have an opportunity to say any other comments. All right, it's time for public comment. Let's see, I'm going to have, I've recognized three of you in a row. Mister, gentleman in pink and the purple shirt, you'll be first, gentleman in the white shirt will be second, and man with the beard back there, about the fifth row, you come up and be third. And one more, in the very back there, we'll let you be fourth. If you give your name, where you live, and you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Drew Jones, I live at 8 Linmar Avenue in North Asheville for 17 years now, and I want to acknowledge the importance of the national and international leadership component of what you all are about to do. It's so incredibly important, not just for future generations, reducing emissions 80% totally, and 2% a year, but also just the leadership of this county around the world. I'm part of the growing climate tech cluster of businesses that have grown up around the NCDC. There are more of us who are hiring people and growing businesses around here. I just got back from Warsaw a week ago, where it's the largest international conference of people who are working to reduce emissions 80% by 2050, just like you all are doing it. We developed a software that the U.S. State Department develops, uses, and also other governments around the world. And so there's this element of, this is my first meeting and first time really being involved with this at all, I don't know if you all see how important what you're doing is internationally. When I go around the halls in Warsaw at these meetings, and I say, they say, "Where are you from?" And usually people say, "Asheul," and they say, "Oh, I want to move there." Not here, right? It's not that at all. In these halls, it's, "Oh, you have all the data." Like, "Yeah, we have all the data." Do you guys get this? It's so important internationally, NOAA and NCDC. And so then, when I'm able to talk to people about what's going on, and they say, I say, "Well, what are you actually doing internationally?" And most of what's happening internationally, what they'll describe, the importance of what's happening at the city and the county level, because we all get to benefit economically and air quality-wise and energy independence-wise, we realize the benefits, whereas all the national work is generations off. You saw some of the math that Commissioner Newman just presented, we get to benefit here and now from what we're doing. Regarding national leadership, then when I come back home here, it's such a point of pride that we walk our talk here. We, you all know this, we are people who walk our talk. We talk about... We talk about environmental leadership, we talk about climate leadership, and you're about to sign a resolution which really walks our talk regarding getting our emissions in line with what really sustains future generations and brings great benefits to all these people of Buncombe County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, sir. And you in the back, I think I had you next. No, actually I had you next, sir, over here. You come on up. Just logistically, let's go and have the next couple people sit on the front row so you can get right up. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Drew Kit, 376 Ross Cragan Road in Arden. I'm principal at Enovo Energy, and I was asked to speak tonight about energy efficiency from a business perspective. I moved to Asheville in 1999. I graduated from UNCA in 2005. Currently, I'm in MBA program over at Lenora Rhine Graduate Studies Center. I have a four-year-old daughter and a six-year-old son. They've lived here their whole lives, and they're the reason why I got into the clean energy industry. I've served on the leadership group of the Blue Ridge Sustainability Institute since 2008, and have been developing clean energy and energy efficiency projects for the last five years. Enovo Energy has recently teamed up with the Global Investment Bank. Our role is to deploy capital into the commercial market under an energy services agreement finance model. The bank developed this ESA structure through their own sustainability initiatives of eight hundred and thirteen projects on a hundred and seventy-five commercial assets globally. Under the ESA model, money is invested in energy conservation measures and is paid back plus a return on their investment with the energy savings that's generated over the ten-year term of the contract. There's several financing programs that are available on the market today. Investing in energy efficiency is big business and it is smart business. Improving energy efficiency of a building increases the productivity of existing assets, guards against future energy price hikes, creates local jobs, reduces carbon emissions, and offers some of the most attractive returns in the industry today that are available. In the US, there's a huge market in, within energy efficiency buildings. By improving them by thirty percent would create a $275 billion market for advanced technology, engineering and design services, and construction activity. I'm here to stand up as a concerned citizen of Buncombe County. As a parent living in Arden with winter views of the coal plant on Long Shoals Road, I am concerned about the reality of climate change resulting from carbon emissions as well as the health implications that that has. I believe that it is our responsibility as individuals as well as leaders to be less wasteful and be more efficient with our resources. I encourage Buncombe County Commissioners, all of you here tonight, to adopt the Buncombe County Energy Independence Campaign. Implementation of this policy will establish Buncombe County as a national leader for clean energy and provide protection of the environment for future generations. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I commend all of you.
Next two speakers, anybody else speakers? We have this gentleman, blue shirt and blue shirt there, you'll be next to.
Hello, my name is Woody Eaton. I am, well, I live in 29 Nebraska Street currently, but two weeks ago I just bought a house at 65 Huffman, so I'm very, very excited to be moving in there soon. I also have a four-year-old son who was born here, so my roots are here and be here for a long time. I'm also one of the owners and general manager at Blue Ridge Biofuels, where we produce biodiesel from used cooking oil collected from area restaurants. And we've been doing this for nine years now, and we're producing over 400,000 gallons of biodiesel a year. So we have a long track record. We produce high-quality fuel that is getting to many customers in Buncombe County through heating oil, also transportation fuel. And I'd just like to, I think what, this resolution is fabulous. I'm real excited to see it. And one comment I had was, the great thing about measures like this is, you know, it doesn't really matter if you believe in climate change or not, because a lot of these activities will save money, so why not? And I just wanted to point out that biodiesel is another option to reduce costs for fueling. Our biodiesel prices, our blended prices are below petroleum now, and there is no extra infrastructure that has to be added. There's no additional cost. You could be using biodiesel blends currently. And we also, I wanted to let you know about a program that we launched this summer, which is called Bio Kids. And it was started actually by some kids at, freshmen at Asheville High through the Ideas That Move Youth Challenge. And they wanted to see Buncombe County school buses using biodiesel. And so through this work that we did with these students, we were able to get restaurants to pledge their used cooking oil to Buncombe County schools. So that's additional savings that we can bring to the table, and I'd love to talk to anybody more about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Light blue shirt and then darker blue shirt.
Good evening. My name is Sam Ovech, and I actually do not live in Buncombe County. I live down in Saluda, North Carolina. But when I learned that this was going on, and this was being talked about in Buncombe County, I felt that it was important to come and see that this could be a guiding way to show other counties how, set a precedent as a great way to be doing things. I've worked on large-scale energy audits in the past, and I would be in support somewhere outside of the county, so it's clear, of the one-to-five-year plan laid out by Shaw Environmental. From an environmental perspective, you're going ahead and reducing carbon emissions when you add up the numbers by about a thousand metric tons of CO2 annually, and that's about equivalent to the CO2 emissions from thirteen tanker trucks' worth of gasoline every year. And then from a financial perspective, and this is where, it doesn't matter what party you're in, it makes a lot of sense, you see a net savings to Buncombe County taxpayers of roughly $1,200,000 over a ten-year period. And then on top of that, you see a recurring savings of close to $200,000 every year after that. So it seems that whether you're for it from an environmental perspective, you can be for it for a financial perspective because it makes sound sense, and you're a beacon for other counties and other parts of the world to show that, hey, look, this being environmentally sound is also financially sound. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ovech. Next up, who else wants to speak tonight? Ma'am, we'll have you, and then Mr. Brim.
Hi, I'm Marcus Renner. I live at 53 Wellington Street here in Asheville, in West Asheville, and I'm a business owner, I'm a co-owner of Conservation Pros. We do predominantly residential energy efficiency work, so I'm actually in this industry and feel like I have a good tie on the jobs that it creates. There are a number of companies in our area that do this, predominantly insulation companies, some HVAC companies as well, and they all hire a number of people. A resolution such as this, the eighty percent, I think would create a lot of interest with the citizens of Buncombe County, and Buncombe County, of course, would share the information. And that interest would basically show the people that this is a logical step for them to do as well. We save energy for homeowners every day, and I get phone calls every week of people that say, let me tell you how much money I saved this month. So it's something that could drive jobs in our area, which is really great. Another point I want to make is that, when you look at energy efficiency, as we've seen with the numbers, it makes economic sense, and we are looking at the low-hanging fruit, the five-year, the seven-year plan. When we look at the individual investments we can make as persons, we don't have these huge percentages that we're looking at, forty percent savings, twenty percent savings. The investment strategies that are financially available to us have a four percent return or a three, or if you're lucky, the stock market gets up to seven. The highest that the stock market's ever shown as a return is fourteen percent. The majority of the energy efficiency measures you're talking about are much higher than that, and there's been a lot of research through the EPA and other organizations that have showed that energy efficiency is the best investment you can make. Finally, I also had the opportunity to work on the Housing Authority of the City of Asheville's weatherization project, and they made the commitment and got the financing and did the work. I was part of the groups of, boots-on-the-ground part of that project, actually doing the work and managing many great people who did the work, provided about 24 jobs for six months. I find that engineers are conservative with their numbers. The Housing Authority was told they'd save thirty percent, they're actually saving fifty percent, and they're going to be paying their loan off much sooner and putting that money into their coffers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Let's see, ma'am, you next, and then Mr. Brambley, I said.
Hi, my name is Anna Jane Joyner, and I work for the Western North Carolina Alliance. As many of you know, WNCAs been working to keep our forests healthy, our air and water clean, and our communities vibrant for over thirty years now. I'm also a longtime resident of Western North Carolina, and I live at Two Sunrise Terrace in Black Mountain, where my mother was an alumni of Montreat, or is an alumni of Montreat, my sister is an alumni of Montreat, and my husband is an alumni of Montreat. So I've been connected to that community for a very long time. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for your leadership and service to keep, to keeping Buncombe County just such a beautiful place to live and work and visit. Constantly have friends coming into town, and I'm just really proud to be from here. On behalf of WNCAs and our members in Buncombe County, thank you for the clean energy products you have already implemented. We believe this energy independence initiative is the next step in the right direction and is a critical policy needed to best your taxpayer dollars as well as our beautiful mountains. Many of you have spoken about kind of the big international global problems that we're already beginning to see in regards to climate change, but since Western North Carolina Alliance is focused on protecting this region, our mountains, I thought I'd mention some of the things that we're either beginning to see or anticipating seeing in the future as far as climate impacts go. One is native species extinction. The Blue Ridge has long been a refuge for plants and animals requiring cold temperate to near-boreal habitats, and unmitigated climate change will have consequences ranging from negative to disastrous for literally hundreds of native species. The loss of trout habitat. Unmitigated climate change will lead to the loss of between 53 and 97 percent of southern Appalachian brook trout populations, and that's by the year 2100. Hotter weather. Asheville can already expect 20 to 30 more 90-degree days by the year 2050 from the warming that has already been set in motion. However, if we continue down this path of unmitigated climate change, we could expect to live, Asheville will look more like Atlanta, Georgia by the year 2100 than what we know at us today, which doesn't impact us, but will impact our children. The loss of seasonality, such as fall color. The warming of the local climate will likewise make our fall color more like the surrounding lowlands and less of the beautiful, rich autumn we see today, which would, of course, impact our tourism business quite a bit. Widespread tree mortality. Climate change is likely to cause or exasperate tree mortality and wildfire across the region through a combination of heat stress and drought. Increased poison ivy growth. Experiments at Duke University have shown that poison ivy outcompetes other native vegetation with the help of elevated CO2. We're already beginning to see that. So I'll leave it there, but I have these, if you would like the references.
If you can leave, you can leave some for the record, we're glad to put that in the record. Any documents anybody has, we'll certainly add it.
I can email you all the records.
Mr. Brim, and who wants to speak after Mr. Brim? Yes, ma'am, any other speakers tonight? Ms. Merrill will be after this lady in the blue. Blue seems to be happening tonight. Okay, go ahead, Ken.
Thanks. I'm Ken Brim. I live at 15 Morning Star Drive, Western North Carolina, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the local Sierra Club group, and also as an individual with 35 years of business experience. And first of all, I'd like to ask those here tonight supporting Mr. Newman's amended resolution to please stand. Thank you. You know, I look at this from several things. To me, this is a triple win opportunity. It's the right thing for the environment, and a number of people have spoken about that. The finances work, and that's exciting. Again, with my 35 years of business experience, you've got to look at the bottom line, you've got to look at what makes sense economically, and this proposal tonight makes sense economically. But the thing I really want to talk about for a second is what this can do for Buncombe County, and particularly in terms of helping us be a leader, and that leader in doing the right thing will help us in recruiting businesses. We are in a very competitive environment trying to recruit businesses to relocate to Buncombe County. We don't have the cheapest land, so things like that work against us. But what we do have working for us is an image, and that image is something that's important. And it's important particularly when you're recruiting an international company to come here to build a manufacturing facility here. There may be debate in this country over climate change, there's not debate in Europe. Companies over there, that's important for them, and they're doing things about it, and they're looking to move to a place that recognizes what they're doing. It's important for us as a community, if we're trying to look at the Chamber of Commerce's five-year plan, and they're looking at trying to recruit high-tech companies, and I spent my career in that field. And if you're getting high-tech companies to come here, having a reputation of being a leader on protecting the environment and things like that is only going to help us and put us in a better position to recruit those kinds of companies and those kinds of leaders and the kind of people that we really want to go after. So I think this is important to us. We also depend a lot on tourism. We depend a lot on retirees moving here. We look at people wanting to move here with young families. They're all really concerned about how clean our water is, how clean our air is, and protecting the beauty of our mountains. And what you're doing with this resolution will really help us in all of those areas. So I would encourage you to support Commissioner Newman's amended resolution as he presented it, and I think it's the best thing for this county and something we'll be proud of in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brim. Yes, ma'am, and then Ms. Merrill.
Is there a camera that can display this on screen? I was told there was.
If you hold it, we'll stick it. If I hold it? If you hold it, we'll stick it and ask them then about handout discussion.
This way. That's where I want to think.
So if I hold it where? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. My name is Dee Eggers, and I live in North Asheville, and I am a professor at UNCA, but I'm not representing UNCA. My background is in public health and environmental science, and I just wanted to bring up an issue that's often not brought up in these meetings, and that is the high public health costs associated with our energy choices. So at the very top of this, I'll see if this is working. Oh, it's so, it's pretty small. That won't quite work out, that's all right. I looked up some more recent numbers on this, and I was just shocked. In Buncombe County in 2010, the estimated public health costs from death, heart attacks, asthma attacks, hospital admissions, chronic bronchitis and asthma-related emergency room visits was over $169 million. Premature deaths accounted for the majority of that, but chronic bronchitis alone is $5,600,000. Some of that, of course, is paid from the county because some of those are visits to our public health department, and, but that's definitely all money that could be spent otherwise that a lot of people here would prefer to spend otherwise. The death estimate is so high because the people most affected by air pollution from coal, and that's what these numbers are for specifically, is air pollution from coal. That affects the very young and the very old, and those numbers are based on estimates of the value of a life that economists come up with, and there's debate about that. But even at the lowest estimates, that's still a pretty significant amount of economic activity that we're foregoing because of our energy choices. All the sources, by the way, for this are on the second page for you. Also in terms of state health impacts, North Carolina ranks fourth in the United States for state health impacts related to coal. And for the nation as a whole, there's an article that came out in the Annals of the New York Academy of Sciences Ecological Economics Review, and their national estimate for health costs related to coal, their best number is $345 billion per year. Now, that actually takes into account factors related, not just health, but costs to buildings, crop loss, et cetera, and it takes into account everything from mining to energy generation and transmission. Just wanted to put that on the table and have that be consideration, because that's not only costs we will avoid spending in the county, but also costs the county will avoid spending and some revenue issues, too.
Thank you, Ms. Eggers.
Thank you.
Ms. Merrill?
Hi again, Christina Kelly Merrill, Fairview, 10 Merrill's Road. I've lived in Buncombe County for 20 years and moved here from California, so I thought it was kind of interesting that the slideshow pointed out California and Arnold. And I applaud the effort and appreciate the passion for doing, for wanting to reduce And I applaud the effort and appreciate the passion for doing for wanting to reduce our carbon footprint. It's important, and it's something that we should look at, just like expanding parks or even the greenways. But we also have to look at not increasing the budget every year and therefore passing that burden on to the taxpayer. And it's sort of, it's very simple. When you're balancing your budget at home and you want to put in a pool, you first thing you ask is, should I go and get credit for it, or should or can I not afford it? And that's the question we absolutely have to ask ourselves with every proposal and every resolution right now is, can we afford it? Not you sitting up there, but can the taxpayer, who's just been hit by an eight percent tax increase, afford it if money is added to the budget to make it happen? And it doesn't make it wrong, and it doesn't make it a bad idea. And I think that Buncombe County needs to be a leader in lots of areas. We're an eclectic county, and we have a lot of different interests and a lot of different people. But one of the areas that we need to be a leader in is fiscal responsibility and reining in the spending and the debt increases and the continued tax burden on our citizens because people are not going to be able to afford to live here if we keep going down that road of great ideas. And I lived in California, and I was a reporter and covered the Board of Supervisors there, and I remember covering these same issues, and eventually California was bankrupt. So my passion is for our county not to go down that road, not to be another Detroit. And while I applaud, again, the passion, and I understand the importance of being a leader in reducing carbon footprint, we can't forget about the even more important mission of making sure that we're not continuing to add to the budget. And twenty years ago, our budget was a quarter of what it is now. Our carbon footprint has not quadrupled in twenty years. So I think we need to take all that into account and try and find a way to make this happen without passing on more burden to the taxpayer. So thanks for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Who else wants to be heard in public comment tonight? In the back, you'll be next, and then you two, let's see, you in the yellow will be next, and then you hiding behind the, right in front of the podium, right in front of the pole there, come on up.
Hi, I'm Stephen Holson Beck, and I live at Six Knob Street. And the question I have is, what is energy independence? And I'd like to thank this group for proposing the amendment to become a slightly more energy-efficient governmental system. And I'd also like to look at how a city could be considered an organism, and how can a city sustain not only its energy needs of all of its inhabitants, but also sustain the needs of those around it? And a self-sustaining organism is one that meets its own energy needs and symbiotically in doing so sustains others. It seems that for eons of Earth existence, only certain organisms have sustained the dramatic climate changes that precipitated mass extinctions in Earth's history. Plants, via the process of photosynthesis, have evolved the internal systems to sustain themselves and millions of additional organisms to present. Can a city be considered an organism? Modern fractal city planning theory maintains that the city is like a cell. Can a city organize itself to sustain the energy needs of its inhabitants? How can current city function find simple yet effective systems for sustaining life? And a cell is comprised of various organelles that care for the functions of the cells. The Golgi apparatus is an organic transportation system. Can smartphone communication technology be utilized more effectively to tap unused space in transit vehicles, both citizens and city vehicles, to more effectively move people and resources around the city? The mitochondria is the energy production within the cell. Can city and state own green space instead of being maintained with machinery, gas, and transport to the green spaces, instead be, excuse me, be cultivated and maintained as an organized herbiculture system? And the lysosomes are organelles which digest waste materials and turn them into usable materials. Could plastics that come into the county be broken down and then used with 3D printers to make household utensils and items? Also, could they be used to make plastic lumber, which might serve to make better foundations for homes? The actin filament is the structure that holds a cell together. Could roadways be planted with bamboo, not for consumption, but for molding walkways such as sidewalks and waterways? And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Holson Beck. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
I'm Leslie Kalba. I've lived here since 1989. I live on twenty-five Forest Hill Drive. I took two years off, one in Henderson County and one in Madison County. This question is simple. I've seen these things when they came before Asheville, and I've checked the UN websites and all this, but when I'm trying to write exactly what you guys are doing, I am confused because I don't know what the baselines are. I know back when Robin Cape was on City Council, it was a 2006 baseline. I don't know what you're using as a baseline for this year. We need to talk about eighty percent reduction. I don't know. I mean, it makes no sense to me to say we're going to reduce it when I don't know what we're reducing it from. The other is, we talk about a two percent annual reduction. Again, I don't know if that is two percent step function, geometrical function, or an arithmetic function. I'm sure point nine eight to the fortieth is a whole lot, it's going to be a whole lot higher than point, point zero two percent annual reduction. So I just wanted some clarification. I mean, if the world is in the peril that people say it is, it's nice to know when our drop deadline would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else wish to be heard in public comment after this lady? Okay, Mr. Yelton, you'll be next. Anybody else? Mr. Rice after Mr. Yelton. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Renix. I'm a resident here in Asheville. I live at 221 Aurora Drive over in Kennelworth. And I'm here to speak, actually very selfishly, as a parent. I support this resolution. There are lots of very good financially sound reasons and business recruitment reasons and larger public health reasons, but I'm speaking selfishly. I'm speaking as a parent. I have two children, a ten-year-old and a thirteen-year-old. My thirteen-year-old was severely asthmatic as a child, and I really appreciate the comments that Dr. Eggers shared because we know, scientists are telling us, studies are confirming that as pollution increases, as temperatures increase, we are going to see public health impacts, and we do see them. My child struggles off and on with asthma. That is a real cost. You go ask, I challenge you, please go ask any school nurse, what is the number one cause of school absenteeism? There's a mother up there nodding with me. It's asthma. It is always asthma. It has been asthma for many years running. That's a cost because if my child has to stay home, then my husband and I have to paper, rock, scissors to see who's the one that stays home. Is his job more important, or is my job more important? I'd like to think my job is more important, but you know, I think we all think our jobs are more important, and no job is more important than my child, and that's the bottom line. So selfishly, I would like to see this passed because I do believe as we reduce pollution levels, I do believe that that is better for our communities, it's better for our children, it's better for our air. But very selfishly, I was thrilled to see the numbers that Commissioner Newman put up there and talked about saving over one million dollars. Selfishly, I would like you to plow that back into education. You know, I would like us to use this for good, so that would literally be a double, a double good rather than a double whammy. We would be reducing pollution, we would be helping our children, particularly children who suffer from asthma, and we would be putting that money into better causes. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renix. Mr. Yelton and then Mr. Rice.
Since I'm so outnumbered, and this is a political issue, as you had a man to have everybody stand up, and I'm probably one of the rare birds here because I was born and raised here, and I'm also not got any financial interest in solar or energy conservation, of which everybody that spoke tonight just about it has, even to Western North Carolina Alliance. You mean some money, and everybody sticks their hand out, folks. Now, when I speak, I'm not speaking as an ignorant fool. I happen to have a master's degree in biology from U N C A, graduated with honors with an undergraduate in psychology, so I know how this politics works, and a master's degree in environmental systems engineering. And I'm here to tell you that the North Carolina coast is a virgin coast, and it will be different ten years from now or twenty years from now. The only thing that's made it stay what it is is insurance, and people go down there and build a million-dollar house, and then the federal insurance program replaces it when a tornado comes through. And where does that million dollars come from to replace that house, folks? Your pocket. Now, you talk about all of these energy reduction things, solar and everything. They only work because you have a tax reduction. Mike Frye just told you tonight, a man went did it up front for a tax deduction, good money, and now he's not making squat on it. All of these energy things only work because there is a tax incentive. Now, when there's a tax incentive, where does that money come from? It comes out of your pocket, folks, whether you like it or not. Because if that company don't pay that taxes, then you got to pay it. And also CO2 production. I think I heard Mr. Newman say they couldn't stop it, even if they did all the global warming deal, they couldn't stop. Well, guess what? One volcano put out enough CO2, remember that, that they shut down the air traffic for half the world. It's natural. It's natural. And I was present in Chicago at the last conference when they changed it from global warming to climate change. It's climate change. It's always been climate change. It's not global warming, and mankind can't change and stop the climate change from occurring. It's going to occur. But you know, one thing you didn't think about, folks? You know where your pollution's coming from in Asheville? Two forty, twenty-six, every afternoon, it's lined up bumper to bumper. That's when your cars pollute, folks. So we should be pushing for better transportation and better roads to get people through Asheville. And I think Mr. Israel's done a great job. Ed comes here every year and gives a report, and he's decreased it every year. Why screw up something that's already working just to make it appeal to a bunch of people because they want to? And that million dollars you save, it won't be back in the taxpayers' pocket.
Mr. Rice? Anybody else want to be heard after Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've always heard they save the best to last, so thank you for inviting me to be last. I've been in business here for thirty years. Household appliances, everybody's got them. Washer, dryer, stove, refrigerator, trash compacters, all these little itty-bitty's and everything. Let me tell you something. When I started, you had appliances that lasted thirty, forty years. Later, it got to twenty and twenty-five. Then it got to fifteen and twenty. Then it got on down to ten. Now it's down to seven to nine years for any appliance in your house. Now, the big bill is passed by one of our members here on the commission before in the House to reduce the energy efficient appliances in your house. So what? My bill every month has increased two-thirds in the dollar amount that I pay for parts. Just me, okay? Two-thirds. Now, let me tell you what you're getting for your home appliances. You are getting the most contaminated junk that you've ever seen in your life. You have got electronic boards in these things that you have to put and seal up in little bags and make sure you get them disposed of because they are deadly. Now, if you think energy efficient is all about energy, what are you doing with the waste product after you use the energy? You need to think further than the Indian O. Now, I've got a master's degree, just like Don, only different. Mine's in a master degree of BS for twenty-some years around these politicians. The only thing that I can tell you from my degree under the BS master degree is the only hot air of climate change, and global change is nothing but a bunch of politicians with a hot air balloon.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. Amen. Any other public comment tonight before we take up our First Amendment and see if there are any other amendments? All right. Thank you. Okay, we have, let's see. Commissioner Newman did a motion to amend. Vice Chair Frost seconded it. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Yeah, I'd like some to give my comments after public comment. So I worked for a very green company that was very instrumental, making a lot of changes, Clayton Homes in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they did a lot of world-class and best-practice things to save money. They worked together to save things to improve the environment and reduce water consumption and a lot of things. They were very pragmatic with it, very practical. I supported most of it. Of course, I wasn't in charge of it because I didn't have that high pay grade, but anyhow. And I supported those things. One of the things I've learned in a year of being on with this commission is that we do have some I would consider world-class, best-practice people here. There are Mr. Israel that you heard earlier. We are way ahead in this county of other counties. I've had the privilege to go with David King to Naco and Raleigh and hear some of these other counties, and at our first meeting, not knowing really what to do, we held our head high because of so many things that we're doing here. So I continue to support that, salute that. Also, I've lived in mountains all of my life. Everybody on this board knows how much I love these mountains, how much I intend to do what I can to protect them, period. I watched them strip mine the mountains of Southern West Virginia where I lived. That's why I was against going to one part of this county and putting solar panels all over it, because to me, you were gutting the land in the name of energy. So energy savings to that kind of extent, everybody would agree is probably not a good I do support staff's ongoing efforts to reduce energy consumption in the county and applaud that. I like what the, I like the one through five, some of the recommendations that I heard earlier. I think those are wonderful. Save the county, I think they can save the county tax dollars long term. However, I am concerned about some of the language that is in the resolution, and I had those discussions, and I have, Mrs. not directed anybody, I think thank Mr. Newman for his passion and the way that he wanted, you know, some of the wording in there and the way it was written, and then the support of the others. So I am in support of the saving of the money. I am in support of, I really liked the report that was done to bring us information back that we can look at it. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support the resolution because of some of the language that was in it that I can't support. Also, I do want to piggyback a little bit on something that was said because I had planned on saying it, and I would like for us to continue to talk about this. I think it's a big deal for our children, and it is I-26 and 240 connector. I am on a committee with two other commissioners, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Newman, and I think it's, I think it is time that we all work together to make that happen because there is a report that was done by Texas Tech that shows the congestion, result of congestion in certain cities. They did it over four hundred cities. The closest one I could find was Winston-Salem, and I believe I'm correct, someone can check this. The numbers aren't really that important, it's just the impact that is. But I think it was five hundred million tons a year as a result of congestion in Winston-Salem, which was the closest one I could find that may seem relevant. So I think we do have some work to do here. I applaud the county's efforts in everything that we do. I applaud the county's efforts in, in everything that we do, and I think that we all, that everybody up on this board has the best interest of our children at heart, and I think that's all I got to say.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Fryer?
Western Carolina Alliance. As we've been talking, they, they want things like this, but Interstate 26, the extension out there, was planned, that would've got traffic through here a little quicker, but a lawsuit from Western Carolina Alliance over, I'm not sure if it's a bug or a bush or what it was, shut it down. So, right there, we, that's a lot of admissions. See the professor laughing at me back there, but ma'am, have you ever been raised around coal? No?
We're not, we're not getting to dialogue.
Well, I'm, I'm tired of the people doing what they want to do. Let me tell you something. Your coal deal, I was raised in a coal mining camp. We had an outhouse, we had a coal chute, I had an aunt to help raise me. She had four daughters, they had a hearth, they put the coal in it, they burned it, that's the way they warmed the house. My uncle worked in the coal mines every day. Went way back, it's five miles back, United States still owned it, it's a little area called Lynch, Kentucky. Every home had an outhouse with a coal shed tied to it, it's a duplex. Ours, so happened, had six rooms, two down, two more, two up, three stories, no heat. But here you're saying that this stuff is killing people. I've got four cousins from '75 down to '68, they don't have any health problems. I had a 91-year-old, 98-pound aunt that carried that coal bucket in the house with the coal in it. She's the one that banked the fire at night with the ashes. She's the one that stoked the fire in the morning. She's the one that fed us. So take yours, you know, if you want to go back and, and call that coal company bad or the energy company that this little study just cost us 100 grand for whatever we're trying to do here, that a man has done a good job, so there's 100 grand we could've figured out how to save, but that coal company or that coal burning plant out there give $40,000 to this that, that you're, you've been up here talking about. So when you don't understand what you're talking about, the best thing, and it's just like the gentleman with the biodiesel. Buncombe County bought Ford ambulances, they're 150-some thousand dollars apiece. We decided we were going to get really good, we run biodiesel in them. It blowed them up. We filed suit against Ford, if, if I'm not wrong, Ms. Green. We lost because it said pure diesel. I built race motors. Right now NASCAR runs corn, we should be eating it, but there's subs diesel to the corn. The race cars on the racetrack today with 10% ethanol are 12% less fuel mileage. I built race motors for alcohol cars and gas cars. The gas cars would take 22 gallons to run 100 miles. The alcohol car took 44 gallons. It takes exactly double to do that. This is factual, this is things that I've seen, this is things that I've done. I didn't have to read about them. So, Western Carolina Alliance, I appreciate you being here because I got all your emails, I got your stuff that comes to me. You're all here, you're doing a fantastic job, but the main fact is, I'm Buncombe County, I want to save energy. Don't, I've never seen a carbon credit, I can't eat it and I can't buy it, and I'm definitely not going to buy something. This man I'm going to do is, I'm going to trust Greg Israel because we've got, we cannot, this man, I want you to stand up, Greg, can we save 80%, period, in savings? He wants to go to 80% over however many years. We cannot get to 80% of anything because that means we got to turn the lights out, people. If you want to turn them out, we can put porta-johns outside so we don't flush no commodes. We can put Sears &amp; Roebuck catalogs in them like they had back when I was a young man, and we can take buckets and get a well and start getting water out of it. Let's get serious, and we're in this just to save energy. I'm not doing it as political, it is political. Leave the other stuff out. Let's just say we at Buncombe County are going to be a leader of energy savings, period. And all that other garbage that people overseas want to read don't need to be there, and they don't need to be from my side either, that, that defunct whatever was brought out there. So, it's, it's, it's not been a good night, I haven't had a lot of rest over this issue, and if I can get it to where it's just energy and we're going to save and spend the money, I'm perfectly happy. But, Western Carolina, you cost us many millions of dollars on one interstate out here, so you don't need to be in here telling us how to save money.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, we, we've heard a lot back and forth on this tonight, and as I look at this resolution, and, and first of all, let me say it's a resolution, it's not law. We don't make laws. And if there were anything in here that attacked Duke Power or any individual or anything, I wouldn't vote for this. But it's not, and it's not asking us to, to buy any carbon offsets, it's not asking us to do anything other than basically what we already do. And so I don't have a problem with that. And we can wrangle over the language all night, and we have, believe me, we've been wrangling over this language for days. And I'm just, you know, ready to say, okay, let's do this. I've listened to everybody, I've heard good points on both sides, and I'm not interested in sitting here and debating the issue with anybody one way or the other. I'm going to do what makes sense from a savings standpoint, as put forth by staff, and I'm going to follow that. And if I may have the liberty, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to clarify something. There's been a lot said about the budget tonight, unless anyone here or at home is worried that we're going to go bankrupt as a result of this or any other projects we have. I'd like to say, North Carolina is what is known as a Dillon Rule state. The legislature has total control over what we do, and Dr. Green, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are not allowed to go out and overspend. This isn't Detroit. We, we're not a home rule state where we can, or make all of these decisions and do and spend to the point that we can't pay it back. If I'm correct, everything we, we spend for has to go before the small governments and municipality board and the state of North Carolina. We have to show where the money will come from, how we're going to pay it back, why do we need it, and what are we doing with it. So I don't want anyone leaving here worried that we're going to go bankrupt because the state of North Carolina is not going to let us do that. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to join the chorus in the love fest for Greg Israel.
Yeah.
It's a big, it's a big fan club that you have, but it is well-deserved, and I'm proud to be a member of it. So you've done a great job in getting the audit here to us tonight, and you did a great job with the presentation. And I do believe that, that the information from that audit is going to allow him to do his job even better because it's just, it's, it's great information, it's really well-presented. So thank you for that. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Newman in particular, well, before I say that, I do want to thank everybody that has expressed their, their ideas and their feelings and their insights tonight. So there. But particularly for Commissioner Newman, we couldn't ask for a more diligent leader on this effort, and it's a great privilege to work with you. A lot of people have talked about passion, but frankly, I see it as just smarts. And it's, we are, we're lucky to have you in this community and on this board to, to champion this, this issue. Because as all the recitals say in the, in the resolution, there are so many good reasons to be supportive of this, of this, and I won't, I won't repeat them, my, my colleagues have said them much better than I could in terms of, you know, the, the future for our grandchildren or the, the return on investment. I, I, I do feel like I had a little second of, of, the wisest thing I did today was to wait and hear the public speak before, you know, I, I chimed in because I always learn something. And, and yet again, or I'm reminded of something anew that's really important, and that, that happened here tonight. And I really appreciate all the people that really highlighted the important economic, economical, and the economic development facets of this, and the job creations piece of this. We might, there, there might be perspectives that don't like hearing that, but at the end of the day, we, you know, I've heard people say a job's a job, and you know what? Clean energy is a job. And I heard a lot of numbers and have hired some of those people with my personal money to come into my house and to give me an audit and to whip me into shape, and yes, I'm saving a lot of money too. So, and those people employ other folks in this community. And just recently, in Weaverville, there is a business up there that is going to benefit from a initiative in this community called Solarize Asheville, because over almost 370 families in a six-week period said, we want to put solar on our, on our house. Y'all can poo-poo it all the way, some people can poo-poo it all day long. It's their money, and they want to invest it, and they're, and they're going to invest it with a business that's in Weaverville that, that employs our people. So isn't that great? So I just think that's, that is an exciting job creator that's going on right here, and I do believe that, that we will be a stronger community in terms of our competitive edge because of what we're doing, and we're kind of leading the, leading the way. And, and we shouldn't let that first speaker's point be lost about the National Climatic Center being here. That's big time, and that is unique, and that is unique to only this place. And so if we, if we lose sight of that, we're not, we're not, we're not thinking smart, we're not being strategic. So I appreciate all the people that spoke today, all the people that, that stood up I appreciate, we, we've talked a lot about the beauty of the mountains and the beauty of the green, and I just, on the other side of Thanksgiving, I want to talk about the beauty of the people because we live in a community that cares about the future, that cares about this place and the prosperity on a lot of different levels, and I'm grateful for that. And so I'm grateful for being educated and being inspired and new, and I'll be supporting this measure, measure today. Chairman Gant.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Any other comments?
Chairman Gant, I just want to make one last comment. And I've, I've expressed this, I think, to everyone on the commission, but I just want to say it for the folks who are here in the audience too, just because they're, just for the purposes of eliminating any doubt. And at the beginning of our meeting, you asked if there's any conflicts of interest on this board, and, so I just want to kind of say for the record that I do work for an energy development company, but I have, I've expressed to this board, I'll express publicly, that the company I work for will not conduct any business with Buncombe County. So if there's any kind of questions about sort of self-serving nature of adopting a policy of this nature, I just want to kind of be on the record stating that. If there's anything that I or people who work with my company can do to be helpful in supporting an initiative like this, we're happy to do it, but we would not engage in any business with Buncombe County for, related to this measure or any other. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I also want to love on Greg Israel and our staff. We've done a lot, we've come a long ways, there's a lot of low-line fruit. We, we had the same windows on the courthouse for how many years? 60, 70? 80 years. So there was a lot of low, that was about a million-dollar project, and that was an immediate huge saving. So there's been, there's been a lot of things that have been done through the years. I don't view this as an either-or thing, this is saying, we, we know more than you. The best thing this board, and the best thing I've learned as a commissioner, is to get out of the way of smart, hard-working staff like Greg Israel. And that's what I think this proposal does. I, I think though that the county also has a moral obligation to set examples, to set the bar high, to give inspiration to smaller counties, to say, this can be done, you should do this. This is, if we can do it, and, and so many times in the time I've been a commissioner, I've gone to meetings and they've said, we saw what you did about steep slopes, we saw what you did about erosion, we saw what you did about dark sky, we saw what you did, we want to, we want to learn from you, we want to do things. And I think we do have an obligation there too, not just because we can do it, but because it's the right thing to do. You have to have a target to know if you hit a bull's eye. And I think we've been hitting bull's eye, but the only fussing I do at my good friend Greg Israel is, he doesn't to his horn enough, he doesn't tell us. And boy, I got slapped over, slapped side of the head when the Charlotte people, I thought they would come and tell him what he needs to be doing, he was telling them, and in a nice Greg Israel way. So we're just going to keep going the way we're doing it, but we got to be good stewards, we got to do best practices. I think this accomplishes all of that. I'm glad that, I really appreciate Commissioner Newman taking the time to dig in and Shaw Engineering and, and Greg Israel and all the people that put this before us because we have to deal with this. It's not something that's optional. We've got to deal with our energy future, and that's what we're going to do tonight. And so that's what I have to say. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, let's see, let me get back here. Motion by Commissioner Newman to amend the original proposal. As he read out, there was a second by Vice Chair Frost. Any other discussion on the motion, on the amended energy independence proposal? If not, I'll call the questions. All those in favor of the amended motion as recited by Commissioner Newman some time ago, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
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 The motion carries 5 to 2, Belcher and Fryer against. Are there any other motions to the, would this be appropriate, a motion to the existing ordinance at this point? Because I think there was a request from Commissioner Fryer to do earlier in the, and I said we'd, we'd do other amendments at the time, so is it appropriate?
We do have another amendment to this, that's what I asked for.
I think you could, I think that the commissioner could make a motion to amend
The existing ordinance now?
What has just been passed by the commission.
Okay. All right. Are there any amendments to the existing resolution? Commissioner Fryer?
We have, we have an amendment that was brought forward, that, that was put into place earlier, that I'd like to put forward.
All right.
If you'd like to take it, Mr. Gant.
All right. Let me, I will go ahead and just read this particular resolution then. This is a resolution regarding Buncombe County energy usage, whereas clean air, clean water, and healthy lands are vital to the people of Buncombe County in western North Carolina, and whereas continuous efforts are needed to further reduce air pollution to improve public health and the health of the natural environment, and whereas Buncombe County has a history of taking a proactive role in energy management, including the development of a 1.4 megawatt landfill gas project which converts methane pollution into useful energy, installing energy-efficient windows at the Corde County Courthouse, and utilizing a range of alternative fuels in the county fleet, and whereas Buncombe County commissioned an energy audit of its 10 largest facilities by Shaw Environmental, which, whoops, Shaw Environmental, which identifies numerous steps that can be taken to improve energy efficiency and reduce energy costs, and whereas Buncombe County is committed to taking practical, achievable steps to reduce air pollution and to be an example for the other public sector and private sector organizations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Buncombe County as follows. Buncombe County establishes a goal to reduce energy usage by 2% annually. This commitment is inclusive of all direct county operations, including the energy required for its buildings and fuel required for county vehicles. Number two, Buncombe County Commissioners support implementation of the energy efficiency recommendations outlined in Shaw Environmental Audit for years 1 through 5 as outlined in Items 3 and 4. Buncombe County Commissioners instruct staff to include into fiscal year 2015 budget a plan to implement projects from Shaw Environmental Audit that result in a five- or less-year payback that should, should funding be available. Buncombe County Commissioners instruct staff to produce, to provide annual updates and a five-year plan for energy-saving projects. That this resolution be effective upon its adoption. Has been a motion made to adopt this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, a, a motion by Commissioner Fryer, second by Commissioner Belcher. Is there any discussion of this amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak against the motion for a couple of different reasons. First, it's, obviously it's largely redundant with the, the other motion, but with a couple of important differences. One is that it eliminates any longer-term goal. Second, it prohibits implementation of any measures that have less than a five-year payback, so we eliminate the opportunities to pursue some very good energy efficiency projects were we to adopt this. And third, it eliminates the scientific basis for the policy initiative in the first place.
All right. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Go ahead. Mr. King, go ahead. Yes, that, I originally supported that resolution that was just put forth. However, we have all debated this and back and forth, this compromise, one that we just voted on. It gives everyone something, we all should know or understand at this point that we don't get everything we want in life. It's about compromise. I'm willing to sit down with people on both sides of an issue, and hopefully we can come together on something that everyone can agree to some level on, that this, it's good. And I think we can here, and I, and I don't want people to lose sight of what we're doing. I mean, we're, we're talking about a project that has a return on investment. And I think that's where we need to go to, you know, let everybody be happy with, you know, their views. I, you know, here again, I'll say it again, I'm not here to debate this with anyone one way or the other. Let's not lose sight of what we're doing is a continuation, and this is just an affirmation of that work that Mr. Israel and his department have been doing. And so therefore, I'm going to stay with the resolution we just approved.
Okay.
The other resolution here, it takes the, the last resolution that was put forward, it does the same exact thing if he wants to add something like that. The other resolution ties in climate change and stuff, that's not a factor, that goes into, could be falsehoods, could not be falsehoods. It's everybody's belief. That's why we tried to get together last night and put something together that everybody could agree on. It may not be the point that we're saying to tell Greg Israel when we're not on this board no more to do something. But David Gant brought people up here to tell Greg Israel what he needed to do to make things better, and Greg Israel told them what they needed to do. So, as, as we said, we're not engineers, I can build a race motor, this man can run a county. It's not, if you want to take the politics out of it, Brownie, I'll be more than happy to go along with you if you'll take some of the stuff out of it. I'm, I'm here with you. But other than that, I'm not.
All right. Any other discussion? Then I'll call the question on Commissioner Frye amendment as seconded by Commissioner Belcher. All those in favor of adopting the second amendment proposed by Commissioner Frye, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
The motion fails two to five. Commissioner Frye and Belcher in favor, remainder against. Are there any other motions, amendments to the policy that we want to talk about tonight? All right. In the next item of business we have...
Do we need to, have we still got to vote on the main motion, or is that?
I think we did.
I guess that wasn't clear, if we had just voted on the amendment or the main motion itself. So, the main motion is approved, no more voting needed on that, so.
Correct. Yeah, I think, I think we, okay, that right, okay.
Okay, thank you for just clarifying.
All right, we have, we had on our agenda, the Board of Adjustment, there is a feeling of the Board that we expressed in pre-session that we will interview those individuals, and so we will not be making that appointment tonight. Is there an amendment, is there an amendment, yeah, is there an appointment or a nomination for the Asheville Planning and Zoning?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Carl Coon for that position.
Second.
All right, it's been a, Mr. Coon's been nominated and seconded for a reappointment, I believe, is that right?
That's right. He served before.
Okay. Is there any, any other nominations? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Coon to the Planning and Zoning, Asheville Planning and Zoning Board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. He is appointed by a 7-0 vote. We have openings on the PAC Place Board, we have one vacancy. We, let's see, we will need a closed session tonight, I think, to discuss some workers' comp matters.
Yes.
All right, so we'll be doing that. The announcements will be, the next meeting of our Board will be next year, January 7, 2014, beginning at 4:30 in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Commissioned meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable, Channel 2, ATT U-verse, Channel 99, live on BCTV Channel 2, and on buncombecounty.org during the meetings, or online anytime at buncombecounty.org. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Been a motion by Commissioner Belcher, second by Vice Chair Frost. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will be in closed session, we do not expect any action when we return, I believe, is that right?
Yes.
No, no action. Thank you.
Where are they going, closed session? Okay.
two-year schedule, and I'm sure...